Okay. We are back, um, in open session. It is seven oh five P M. Um, we will, um, start with the pledge, because we didn't talk about it. We'll move into, um, approval of, um, treasury warrant payroll and minutes.
Uh, make a motion to approve treasury warrant twenty-four dash five and payroll twenty-four dash P W five.
Austin, is there anything out of your area or anything?
Uh, yeah, just one. We did have, um, the payouts for the retirement of a D P W employee, and then we also had a transition in the dispatch for an employee, so costs associated with uh, those employees leaving the employment of the town of Rutland. But other than that, nothing significant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Austin or Becky since she's here? Hearing none. Harry, roll call.
Second I.
Matt's an I with the exception of table access.
Roger I.
Galvin I excluding safe place.
Whitman I, thank you. Um, we have a few sets of minutes. We have, um, August twenty-first, our executive session. I think we'll do them separate because, um, Tom, I think that you were out on the twenty-ninth, so we'll do them separate, so, um.
Uh, make a motion to, sorry, how was that words again? Approve, uh, make a motion to approve the executive session, um, minutes, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, but not released to the public.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Harry, roll call.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Roger I.
Galvin I.
Whitman I.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, open meeting.
Is there a second?
Second emotion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Tamika. There's a lot. No problem. Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Roger I.
Galvin I.
Whitman I. All right. I'll make a motion to approve August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second emotion.
This was a bylaw review, so, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Harry, roll call.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Roger I.
Galvin, two.
Whitman I. Um, I just wanted to start and welcome everybody back to school. It's been a week since everybody's been back, I think. Um, I hope everybody's, you know, Wachusett and Bay Path and, um, the private schools and everything are going well and the teachers and staff and students are, are getting back into the swing of things and the routine. College kids, I think some have already transitioned back and some are still in the transition phase, so good luck to all to all of our Rutland kiddos who are going off into the, into the world. Um, I think that there was, Rutland suffered a, a loss a couple of weeks ago. Bill Bailey, right, Harry? Um, was a longtime resident and, um, involved, I think, in planning board and the sportsman's club.
Uh, he, he, I can't tell you how many things he was involved in.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did, uh, church duties, he did, uh, American Legion. I mean, it was just, he was just that kind of guy.
So, a big loss to town, so our condolences to, to the Bailey, Bailey family and friends, um, and know that, you know, we've been thinking of them. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, the heat, the past few days has been tough and unexpected for September. So if you can, everybody just check on your neighbors and make sure everybody's doing well. Town staff, library, uh, town offices, library, council on aging are open with air conditioning. If there's a, a need to escape for, for the middle of the day, by all means, reach out. Anybody else? Anyone here for public comment? Hearing none. We will transition into the town administrator update. Um, I think, Austin, you had asked if we could take the treasurer collector position discussion out from new business and move it in with the town administrator update, um, since it's more of a discussion at this point, and Becky's here to also provide some, some insight rather than keep Becky. Is the board amenable to that?
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Great. Um, so I just have a couple of slides before we get to that. Uh, I'll be brief. Um, good evening. Uh, thank you very much. It's been, um, an interesting, um, week or so, especially with the, with the start of school, so just figuring out logistics on, uh, working with the schools to make sure that they have adequate resources, and we made some improvements to their parking lots beforehand as well, so just working with this transition of the, uh, of the new school year and, and welcome everyone, uh, back as well. So, um, for budget and finance, um, as I mentioned, in my last update, the audit was near completion. It's now been complete for F Y twenty-two. We've, we've received the draft audit and, uh, management letter. We are reviewing that and we will be providing, uh, feedback before the final audit, uh, is released and obviously presented to finance committee and select board. Uh, no significant findings thus far in the, uh, in the management letter. Uh, we sent out the capital manual to departments and committees and the regional school districts last week. Uh, requests will be due, uh, towards the end of this month, and we'll work, obviously, to develop, um, all the requests and present, uh, and start the capital review process with C I P C. As I, as noted in the approval, uh, we do have some accrued liability payments that we paid, um, in the payroll for this year due to recent retirements and staff uh, turnover, turnover. So you'll notice some of the expenditures on, particularly in the, uh, in the D P W and dispatch, there was some unexpected, uh, transition there for expenditures. So this is where we are, um, as of, as of today, so just under twenty-five percent for general fund and just uh, under ten percent for water and sewer front, so, um, obviously, there's a little bit of difference with that million something dollar hit for the retirement contribution. So to personnel, we've got some new faces, um, in town hall and some of the other town offices. Our conservation agent Brianna started last Friday. Um, Lindsay Brown in the treasurer collector's office, who's handling payroll and A P. Um, she's also a Rutland resident. Uh, she started, uh, today. We did find an administrative assessor, Tia. Uh, she's great. She actually has previous experience assessing in another community, so she jumped right in and, um, actually, she's already doing some, some work, so there's not a lot of getting up to speed for, for Tia, so, um, if you stop by town hall, please say hello. Um, and they are, uh, they're, we're excited to have them. Um, we began the interviews for the H R coordinator position last week and continuing over the, the next week or so for the first round, and we'll get into the subsequent rounds for the H R coordinator. Um, the assessment center for the deputy fire chief, uh, was conducted last week. We had a lot of great applicants, very qualified applicants, I can say. Uh, and we actually interviewed the, uh, top three finalists, um, today. Um, so they, uh, assess the scores from the assessment center and the interviews, and the chief will make a selection for the deputy chief. Uh, the police lieutenant, um, is still out for advertisement. Uh, we are using the same firm as the deputy fire chief recruitment. Uh, that's about a month behind, um, so probably starting sometime in October for, for, um, I'm sorry, on October, November, um, for kind of the, the same process where we are now. And ongoing recruitments, still looking for a town planner, uh, with the promotion of Carl to, uh, foreman. We're looking for a mechanic and, um, now three D P W labors, equipment operators, truck drivers. Uh, with the retirement of Eric, we now have three, uh, vacancies, and we've actually started interviewing and actually some promising candidates for that position as well. So Becky's position, treasurer collector. So, um, we, uh, would like to kind of have this discussion with the board to, to see what your thoughts are for, obviously, this very important position. What you see on the slides are kind of a tentative time, timeframe for kind of all the deliverables or tasks for this process of recruiting a new treasurer collector. Uh, the first thing is, as, um, as we've talked about in the past, is just making sure we're constantly reviewing our job descriptions and classifications, so uh, we'll be looking at that now to, you know, take a look at some of the responsibilities that have changed, not only in the, in the industry, but also for Rutland's treasurer collector position, if we're, if we need to look at compensation adjustments or, you know, change of title. Um, just for example, some communities recognizing the, um, involvement in virtually everything for the treasurer collector. You know, do we look at a finance director position for the town? So, um, after that, we'd like to, you know, start, uh, advertising the position within the next couple of weeks. Um, either, you know, kind of late September, early October. Um, and then, uh, the proposal that, that Becky and I have suggested, is a working group appointed by, um, myself, um, from folks that are in the industry, uh, folks that, um, you know, have a deep understanding of obviously treasury collecting, but also municipal finance, uh, to assist with the recruitment process, but also the, um, kind of weeding out of candidates. And the idea is to present the finalists, um, for interviews mid-December, early December, go through the finalist interview process and have someone start for, um, you know, maybe early to mid-January. And the thought is to give, uh, the new treasurer collector, or whatever you want to call them, an opportunity to work alongside Becky, uh, to get up to speed as well for how Rutland, um, you know, does things in the treasurer collector's office, but also from our whole, our whole municipal finance operation. So this is, you know, kind of our proposed timeline, but, you know, happy to have some discussion and seek feedback on this proposal.
Well, we have, uh, in the budget to account for two in the same position for multiple months till year.
So obviously, something to, to consider taking a look at whether we address that at a special town meeting, um, or the routine thing of end of the year. Obviously, we'll have to consider that as well, but, um, this, I think, is a, a good opportunity, especially with, um, now, we don't think, do things totally different, but I think it would be a good opportunity to get this new treasurer collector totally up to speed with how we do things, um.
I, I don't disagree with having them come in and having some of that overlap. I just want to make sure we're accounting for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we didn't obviously budget for transition in this, in this department, um, or in this office particularly. I can say, obviously, we, we do know that with, uh, reduction in the assessment for the Wachusett, Wachusett School District, we know we're a little bit in the black. Um, for the bottom line of the budget, but Lord knows, we haven't had snow yet. We haven't had some other things, so, um, but, you know, we also can, you know, take a look at possibly using free cash or some other sources to, to fund this transition as well. I think that, you know, with the significant amount of responsibilities that, um, Becky's position has, I really want to make sure that they have everything they need before we lose Becky to a boat in Florida.
Agree.
Sorry.
Uh, and so I wanted Becky to be here not only to answer any, any questions, but also just to talk about the nature of, you know, she's been here ten years, things that have changed and her thoughts on, especially that, that first task and deliverable, so. Any thoughts, Becky?
Question? Or were you gonna speak?
Yeah, you can just ask me questions.
See as the pool of talent out there, because you've been in this for ten years now, you've been to all these meetings, you've been to these regionals. What do you see as a pool of really good qualified talent out there?
So, the, the community is, is kind, it, it's big, but it's small at the same time of the treasurer collectors that are out there. Um, so the more senior people can, and the people that kind of know what's in the, they're involved in the Worcester County group, um, kind of know which towns are trouble and know which towns are, are easier and, and, and there are a lot of, um, good candidates at smaller level towns, uh, smaller than Rutland that I see would move into this position, not to ring my own bell or toot my own horn, but because it's not, they're not walking into something that has to be cleaned up. Because there are, there are towns that, that they're, they can't find a replacement because there's cleanup and reorganization and that type of stuff. I'm not saying that there's, everything is perfect, but it's not, um, something that they have to clean up. So, the, the talent pool, I, and that's why I kind of told Austin that I think doing, instead of going out with a recruiting firm or something like that, I think, um, if we do something internally with a, you know, a few people from the community, a few people from the town, um, to set up our own recruiting team, I think it'll work because there's, there are some good, good treasures out there that work in smaller towns that would, I think, would come at this, for this opportunity, so.
Paul, did you have a question?
No, not me.
Jen, did you have a question?
Um, I just wanted to, it sounds like it, but just confirm that you, you are gonna be involved in process of.
Would like to be.
That's my plan.
Recruitment.
Yeah.
Okay.
And how long of a overlap would it be, roughly?
Um, my plan is to, I'll be done the end of February, so, March first, so it'd be mid-January, January and February, two months.
Alright, so that's.
Not too bad.
No.
Yeah.
And I think there is a lot of value to having that over, to having some overlap. I mean,
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, and I think it varies a little bit by position. I think some, some of even the, the stumbling in the town administrator position is that there hadn't been any sort of transitions, um, and so just for continuity as far as, okay, these are a few things that need to be wrapped up or better transitioned versus just walking into whatever. So I do think that there is value to
Right, and I think.
To having that overlap.
Right, and I think every town do, does things a little bit differently. You can, you can go over to Paxton and like the town accountant does the payroll and the treasurer does not, you know, she does, does the other part, but there, every single town just is kind of different in the way they operate. So, somebody's coming, gonna come from another town, they know the basics and they've been to the schools and this is what a treasurer collector does, but in Rutland, we do the payroll and we do the benefits and we do the, you know, all of it, so just getting those up to speed.
Yeah, as far, and I think the regional school is a, a little bit of a, a weird thing, depending on where they're coming from also. Um, as far as the title and everything, um, I mean, it's, I don't think it's a surprise. I've been pushing kind of for a strong finance team in town. Um, and I think, I think we are working towards that for sure. Do you think that there's value to kind of changing it from a treasurer collector to a director of finance or finance director or whatever, um, and listing one of the main job functions as, to, to serve as treasurer collector? Um, just because I do feel like you do so much of, of that work, um, of the, the finance director, you know, more than, more than a treasurer collector.
Yeah, I think with the, the lack of staff that we've had, I've just kind of picked stuff up, like, you know? And just kind of overseeing the accounting office, because that was such a, a part-time position, and then overseeing the assessors because there was so much turnover there. So, kind of where I'm at is, is that, you know, as an overseer of the, all those different pieces, because they all affect really the bottom line and what I do, so, like, somebody that would oversee the assessors and the town accountant and, um, payroll. Um, H R is kind of like a weird, weird town administrator, is it under, or under the treasurer collector or the finance director. It's kind of what I've been doing, but, you know, and if you look at other towns, like Sturbridge has a finance director that oversees the assessment, assessing and town accountant and, and the, the tax collection, treasury, whole area too, but she is also the treasurer collector, so, um. It's a, it's a thought of changing it that way. I don't, but I guess that would come from how, how you wanted to advertise it too, but.
Right, and I guess that's just a little bit of wondering what the market is and, and how, how that would change the function of the assessor, right, because I, I think currently the assessors, a direct report to the town administrator. And so would that's, would that stay or would that, you, you know, like looking at some of, some of those other pieces that may or may not be impacted.
The reporting structure.
Right, right, and where, where it might, where a director of finance, I don't, I think, I think that that position is doing the work of a, of a finance director, um, and to your point.
With the title, right.
Right, it's without the title, and so I don't know if, um, having a title is a little bit more enticing, um, because I know in, in private industry, it's compensation and title carries a lot of weight also, so, um, in making it clear that treasure, you know, I, I think at least initially the treasurer collector would be the, a, a main function of that, of that role.
Right.
Um.
I think with the additional staff that we, that we have right now, it, and until we can kind of see where everything, if we can keep somebody in the assessor's office and keep the H R person, um, maybe you leave it as treasurer collector and then see as we're going through with, with Austin and with an H R coordinator and with the, um, consistency in the offices. I think it, I mean, I'm just, it'd probably be good just to keep it as a treasurer collector, but then down the road.
Look at transitioning.
Look at transitioning, you know, as I'm, as I'm looking at the additional staff is gonna be, is gonna be huge for everything that I've been doing, so.
And I guess, I mean, and this is just me thinking, I guess, if we're thinking that potentially we would be Rutland, we would be a draw to a, a current treasurer collector, but maybe from a, a smaller community, that coming in as treasurer collector with some additional responsibilities is nice, and then maybe the potential to transition it into a director of finance or a finance director position or something. Um, rather than straight away looking for that higher.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, I'm pretty know.
I don't, I mean, that's, I think, I don't know how the board as a whole feels. I kind of would let it up to Austin and Becky and see how the market is and and what the pool of candidates are. I just don't want to necessarily lose out on someone because of a title thing.
Yep.
But I don't want to go straight away to the bigger title if.
Right. Right, I think, I mean, I threw it out there, whether you wanted to restructure or not, but, um, like, look, thinking about it now, it, it may off, or put off some of the smaller town treasurer collectors, like, well, I'm not ready to move into a finance director position.
Something.
It might, they might feel more comfortable moving to a bigger town as a treasurer collector. And then learning everything that's done and that type of stuff, so, um.
And we have, eh, we're fairly new as far as having a full-time assessor and everything also, so I don't necessarily want to change that reporting structure, management structure, um.
Right.
Unnecessarily, until we have, but I would be interested in knowing kind of what the market is and how.
Right, I think, I think if we get the, the ad out there and
You get a silver.
See where you go. Yeah, see, see what shows up.
How's the rest of the board feel? Harry, do you have any?
No, I, I, uh, my first indication was it could scare some away. I mean, there's a lot of responsibilities here as a treasurer collector, and now you say, what am I gonna do as a finance director? Shouldn't even apply. That's something to look at down the road.
I wonder also, I'm just looking at the, our file that we were just talking about, and it's talking about you managing the employee benefits and everything too. Is there a way, you know, if we decide that director of finance or whatever that is a little too scary for people, is there a way to work it in something that's more encompassing finance and employee benefits?
So I think in that.
I think that would be the H R though, right?
Yeah.
I think in that bylaw.
Is that gonna transition to that?
We talked about that that is something that's delegatable, so that would be delegatable to
The H R person.
H R payroll, eh, payroll, depending on how those positions.
But it would still be up to Becky's position to oversee that, correct?
I, so, yeah, I mean, I think that that's the way the bylaw is right now. Um.
Just, it's just thought.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm open to options, suggestions. Does that, we think is marketable.
Yeah, I think that sounds, yeah.
Got a plan.
Paul, do you have any?
Mm-hmm.
You're good?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Does that give you guys?
It's been, it's been a pleasure of mine to work with Becky for ten years.
Thank you.
And I've learned a lot from her and, um, you know, every time that I've asked for something, it has not been a problem to get my hands on it in relatively short order, so, you know, um, first it was Dan, and, you know, things have progressed and gone through this one and that one and so on and so forth, and uh, thank you, Becky. I really appreciated you.
Thank you.
I second that. Even in my short term, Becky's helped me with lots of questions.
And, thank you, Becky.
I try to be responsive.
Yes, you implemented a lot of good policy and, and procedure in town, coming, you know, over the, the time that you've been here, so, um, payment plans and kind of looking at back taxes and, and all of that, so I appreciate the work that you've done on that front also. So, we're not saying goodbye yet, because we still have you for another few months, but.
Where's my countdown now? Six months, six months.
And thank you for your guidance and assistance on kind of filling this.
Yeah, I wanted to be, be fair and, and do this, a six-months notice instead of a, I mean, my contract says I only have to give forty-five days, but that's just, you know, I've been here for too long that I don't want to see.
It shows you care of your position.
Exactly, I don't want to see it.
That's all it shows.
Yeah.
In the town.
In the town, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the work you're gonna continue to do.
We'll get, uh, Lindsay up to speed doing payroll and, um, it'll be great.
Yeah, I'm glad that you're starting to see some of that staff support build back also, because I know it's been.
Been hairy. So, this is great.
So, thank you for sticking it out too.
Uh, it's just a couple more items, um, the parking lot, um, I just realized I have a table. Berm, berm, we have one berm, not two. Um, the D P W installed that, uh, this week and they, or, uh, not D P W installed it, the contractor installed the D P W, uh, backfill the berm this week. Uh, paving is tentatively scheduled for September twenty-first. Uh, Miles Road, uh, is underway. They, uh, should be done installing the main um, next week. Pretty quick project. Um, and then, you know, they'll have to come back, um, to, you know, pave the, where they trenched it. Uh, but no issues thus far. They, you know, there's still some issues. That's some very old pipe. Some of the valves there are a challenge, so we are very much looking forward to having the new pipe installed, uh, with updated valves and mains and everything else. Um, and also the residents are, you know, should be looking forward to that as well, because this has been a high priority, uh, section with all the, the water main breaks that they've had. Um, speaking of water mains as well, uh, the water main for the, um, Rutland Heights property, uh, was installed. It's not yet connected uh, in terms of, I guess it hasn't been turned on yet. Um, there's still, you know, a couple of items that need to be turned on, uh, or, or completed for Harmony Place uh, connection to their property itself, but the main from, from the school essentially to the front of the property, um, has been installed uh, with minimal impact to the school property, more so just on, um, on the roadway in front of the Harmony Place. Nate, Nate Quack School, uh, playground project, uh, procurement is underway. We are fortunate that the vendors that we're looking to work with are on state contracts, so we can save a little bit of money. It's also easier to do procurement through the state contract. Uh, so, uh, Director Galvin is, is working, uh, to, uh, to finish that, uh, procurement. Uh, and also, I just wanted to give an update on the, the Hubbardson cell tower, so if you uh, drive through Hubbardson and you, and you look across from that beautiful new storage facility, um, the cell tower is built and complete and, um, you know, kind of the structures are finished. Um, right now, we're actually just waiting on the contractor for the radio crew to, um, for availability to install the radio equipment, so we're right there. Um, I would estimate in the next couple of weeks, um, that the radio equipment will be installed and that cell tower will be activated. The, uh, town of Hubbardston, but also obviously our Rutland Regional Dispatch has been, has been a project long in the making to, to complete. Uh, the next steps was we'll work with, uh, Hubbardson town officials to put our N R F P for, um, and actually, this isn't a cell tower, this is a communications tower, and we will, we will be doing, um, a cellular request for proposals um, for, you know, companies like A T and T, Verizon, um, to, uh, also install their equipment to increase some of the cell covers there, which is terrible. Um, so hopefully we'll get some increased service for the town of Hubbardston. And that's a picture of the tower. It's hard to get a a nice picture of a cell tower. It's not that fancy looking really, but, uh, Paul knows more about this than I do. It's, I guess it's one of the fancier towers, but I don't know any detail. Uh, but, that's a tower.
The tower, the tower, I can look at the picture and I can see that there's a lot of, uh, potential communications possibilities using it, so, yeah. You know, it's, it's a well-built tower and I'm kind of, out of the corner of my. You know, it's it's a well-built tower and I've kind of, out of the corner of my eye, watched it go up. Um and all the work that's done on it and I've had a couple of conversations with our fire chief about it, and so yeah, you know. We know it's coming and you know, there were some issues along the way, but now they're all straightened out, and so now, yeah, it's just a matter of getting. The base station installed and uh setting up links between here and here and there.
Uh yeah, and I wa- I wanna thank Director Moriarty for his work on this, this is obviously engaging a lot of stakeholders, obviously Rutland Regional Dispatch. Hubbardson Town Officials, State nine-one-one, there's a lot of um people involved in this project, so we're thankful that this is. It's right there. Um and I just wanted to notify uh the board, we did receive notification from what you said, school district. Um the fire pump uh for Central Tree Middle School, did I say that right, is it Senator or Central Tree to me? I keep mixing up the restaurant and and the middle school. Um it's uh, this is, you know, kind of one of those items, like a lot of our infrastructure, you know, a lot of deferred maintenance there. Um fire pump, because of the dead end, there's not, there wasn't a lot of pressure to the middle school. So they needed a fire pump to increase the pressure for the suppression system. Uh estimated cost of replacement for this would be around fifty-five thousand. Uh that was, we received that quote before the water main to Harmony Place was installed, so um. Former director, uh D P W Director Buckley thought was uh looping the system will actually increase the volume to the middle school. Um but however, volume does not always mean increased pressure, so. Uh we'll need to uh work with the schools to engage some engineering services to determine flow rate and a couple other technical terms that I don't really know too much about. But the idea is we need to figure out if there's adequate pressure for the suppression system. Um if there is, with looping the system, uh we may not actually need to uh replace that fire pump at the tune of the fifty-five thousand, so. Paul?
Just a question, I'm I'm, okay, you're replacing um the pump at the Central Tree Station, uh Central Tree School. Now, this is the one that services the fire extinguishing system, okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure, okay, thank you.
And it's my understanding, uh the other two schools, there's enough pressure um that they actually don't have fire pumps, but. Just the location and the way that our infrastructure was, when they built the school, whenever they built it, they needed a fire pump.
Interesting, okay.
So we'll see, so again, we'll work with the schools to uh to determine if we if we need to do that. Obviously, this is a capital item, so we'll have to evaluate this in our capital uh planning process, so.
Is the, may I ask, is the engineering services on the um school to to detect, to engage or for on us to engage? I I mean, I assume the request came from this, from what you said, from the district, so. I assume that they had done something that pointed to the fact that we needed to replace the pump in the first place. Um without any communication to the town as far as saying, hey, do you have anything going on, because we could have told them. Hold up in three, in two months or three months, we're gonna have a a a changed system, so it makes more sense to do that test.
Yeah, so this was triggered by an annual inspection, um that's mandated for this, so um that triggered uh the inspectors to say, well. Maybe take a look at this, so that's where they end up getting the cost of replacement um from the fire suppression vendor. Um I our thought is when we've engaged early with um with the facilities director and and Dr. Riley to. You know, communicate this, um and we'll, you know, have to determine, the the cost is well under the the threshold, so. If it's the school's responsibility or if we need to work out a a compromise for who pays for the engineering services. The challenge also with engineering services though is we could pay the money for the engineering services and they say, yes, you need the fire pump. So, um I'll have to take a look at that.
Whomever did the inspect, I assume it was a state mandated inspection, can they come out and. Re-inspect if we say, hey, there is a significant change, I don't know, that's just a question to.
Yeah, well, I we'll work with Seth to to see who would be appropriate, we could also, you know, you know, there may be some, we do pay for. Engineering services uh through the D P W, Western and Sampson, um we have talked about this before we, before the water line was complete. Um so we may be able to work with them to see if they can do some sort of sort of flow testing and pressure testing for us too, so.
Thank you.
Um I just do have one more, I I promised the board that I would, and this is included in your packet, um we've been working. Uh there's been some um feedback we've received, but also due to some of the notices that have been sent out. Um this summer, like every summer, um there's been instances of some brown water. Um which uh as I do a little bit of more research into not only water, but especially brown water. Know that this is a an annual thing that happens in the town of Rutland. Um for a variety of reasons, so what's included in your packet is a frequently asked questions document to. And I wanted to present this to the board before we put this out to the public. Um some of the the highlights or some of the frequently asked questions that we're getting about brown water and to keep it um short and sweet. I mean, there's a lot of um culprits, if you will, for for why we have brown water. Um we have old infrastructure, with a lot of this old infra- infrastructure, especially during the summer months. Uh with increased use, that does kick up some sediment and also, you know, some of the old pipes. Um may turn the water uh brown as it's flowing through and and stirring up that sediment. We also have um a surface water uh source, uh Mashka Pond, which is a. Um spring-fed reservoir that every summer refills itself, and just by replenishing itself, also stirs up the sediment and turns the water. Uh brown as well. We also this year have had significant amount of rainfall, which uh especially when we're talking with our new conservation agent. That may be another culprit for, you know, some of the runoff and and erosion that's happening in in the water source itself. Turning uh turning the water a little bit brown. Um and um our water treatment facility or water treatment plant operates three filters. One of those filters has been offline uh due to necessary replacement and repair. So we're also operating at, you know, kind of two-thirds capacity for our filtration system, which also, you know, not only places strain, but has. Impact on uh on the water um as well. Uh there's annual things that we have to do, we always, and you see you see them around, not only in Rutland, but everywhere, we need to make sure that we're constantly flushing our. Our pipes, um so, you know, I've seen seen them flushing on on Maple, I've seen them around town flushing. We have to do that every year, uh in some cases, um multiple times a year to make sure that. Um you know, some of the sediment is flushed out, and you do see that when they flush, you see all the things come out of the the fire hydrants, so we we need to. Uh not only uh do that, but you know, be a little bit more consistent. Some cases, we also have dead ends, um which also um kind of. Keep some of that sediment in in the water infrastructure, so uh we need to flush those and bleed those lines. Uh some of this also, we have a responsibility to flush our lines, we also asking homeowners if they're experiencing brown water. Um I've seen some recommendations from at the state level, um you know, every other, you know, every couple of days flushing for. Ten minutes, just to, you know, keep cleaning your pipes, which I know is a a tall task to ask people, but just understanding that. Every summer this happens, but also we've had a challenging summer. Um so we do, you know, those are some of the some of the reasons why we have some brown water, but um. We also just have a have a need to invest in our infrastructure, so thankfully, town meeting in uh twenty twenty-two supported, is it twenty twenty-two? I think. That's what I saw online, um we had three million dollars in water main improvements, this obviously isn't nearly enough to cover all the infrastructure improvements that are needed. Uh but we've utilized this to address some of the older pipes, um and infrastructure that have been, you know, susceptible to breaks, like Miles Road. Uh we use it obviously for some of Palmagussit, Inwood, some other improvements that are needed, and that was uh working with our town engineers. Uh to identify some of the highest needs for water infrastructure, but certainly, we have a lot more water. Infrastructure needs that we need to take care of. Um there are some resources that homeowners can also do, so if they're concerned about the uh the safety or quality of their water. Um they can uh seek uh testing, and we've listed some of the recommended vendors that are certified by Mass D E P. Some of the close ones are in Westboro and Air, um once they receive those results, they can actually send them to the water department. And we can work with Weston and Sampson to interpret those and make sure that those levels that uh are received from the testing facilities are are safe. Um and also, every water supply, um especially in this area, has um levels of manganese, uh which is. An abundant earth metal, um and they're naturally reoccurring in not only surface water, but you know, groundwater supplies. Like I said, every water system has that, that also, just the presence of manganese, um does affect brown water. Or does affect water and turn it a little bit brown, and also the way that we treat it, not only turns it brown, but turns it a little bit of a yellowish color, which I know some people have experienced as well. Um so also, some of the ways that we treat the water changes the color as well. Um so we are, um is there options to eliminate some of the manganese or brown uh brown water? Um or other minerals in our system? Sure, um but as I just mentioned, whether it's groundwater, surface water, they all have issues. Um and you know, just just the example of um talking with Weston and Sampson, if we were to drill down a hundred feet and identify manganese. If we drove down three hundred, it's probably gonna be there too, so there's no perfect way to to eliminate another one. Some of the things that I mentioned, flushing and everyone else, everything else, so before I get to the other, any questions on brown water?
Uh just a question, um when you talk to the water department, did they mention anything about the inlet? If you look at the pipes where the inlet is, they don't extend out very far. So as water levels and you stir around the edge, that's where you pick out, at least that's what they told me when I was there a year or so ago. Uh I think they extend out maybe fifteen, twenty feet, and they really should be out into the deeper part of the pond. I don't know if they're looking at making a change there to help it out, or, cuz I haven't talked to them lately.
Yeah, so um it's my understanding, especially just the way that the reservoir turns over, the sediment has kicked up. Pretty much throughout the pond, and we have to allow for things to settle a little bit, especially with the amount of rainfall, it's been and and it. Yeah, it's not like we just had one week in July where there was significant rain, I mean, for the pretty much a whole month of July. Um and and to a little bit of August, we had some significant rainfall, so, yeah, I wish we we could just say, alright. We had a bad week in July and things should get better soon, we had a crazy summer with rainfall, so, but to answer your question, I mean, the the um. Uh water treatment plant needs needs some investment, so whether it's the in inlet, whether it's um the facility itself. The infrastructure in uh within the facility needs to be improved, so um I think this is a good time in our capital process to talk about some of the needs and. Present them to the community and say. You know, these are our needs, what do you wanna do? Um and obviously, that's to leadership of the board as well.
Uh I probably, one of the good things this year, cuz we've had so much rain, I haven't smelled algae in my water this year. So that's a positive, because when it gets really low, that's when the algae starts to kick up in your water.
And we know of a drought.
Yeah.
Before. It's good.
That's been a good thing.
Paul, did you have something?
I was just wondering, Weston Sampson has been providing information on what to do with the pumping station?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, you know, what, they're very comfortable with what's coming, what the final product is coming out of the pumping station, I gather?
Yes.
Okay, so the issue really then goes back to the end of the, the end of the line is where the problems have been occurring.
End of the line, and and obviously, we still have some old old water mains, um you know, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we had the Maple and Maine. There's some pipes that still, you know, that date back to the late eighteen hundreds, so. Um we've got some old stuff.
Okay, no.
Um so we've gotta look at all of our 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 uh infrastructure, um starting from the source, the treatment plant. You know, to the end, we've got a lot of needs there.
One of the, one of the families that talked with me that was having a dirty water problem told me this afternoon that it's cleared up.
Well, solved it.
So, you know, okay, one good thing, you know.
They knew we were talking about it tonight. I think it's one of the things where, given that it's a, that our water source is a pond, and also, we haven't. Invested in infrastructure, period, and and since the treatment plant has been built and since. We continue to allow connections and everything, but there's no investment on capacity or just upgrades. And routine maintenance and everything, it's more, something breaks, we fix it versus proactively, and so we're. I feel like this is an ongoing theme for this board, um but we're we're at that critical point now where things are. Twenty to fifty years out without any sort of real attention, and we need to.
Uh any other questions on brown water? So I do have just one more uh related to water, the just uh response to um. Uh selectmen, segments question at the last meeting, uh there was a notice that was sent from the water department to. Certain water users uh with respect to sampling results um for, I'm gonna butcher this one. Tetra chloro ethylene, P C E. Um so as a uh as our responsibility is as a water department, we have uh required sampling. Uh for our water main infrastructure and the product that flows through it. Um in this case, we conducted a sample uh in a certain area of town, um Sherland Drive. Uh the sampling results identified um higher than uh. Or regulatable um sampling results for P C E um in the water supply. And when you identify something that's higher than the levels um for regulation, we have to notify the users. Um so what is P C E, it's a a manufactured chemical that is often used for dry cleaning. Uh metal degreasing and also also heavily used in the aerospace industry. Now, I don't think we have any major dry cleaning businesses or aerospace or metal degreasing. It was a a substance that was found in some of the pipes that were installed in the seventies and eighties, um and we installed the pipe. And obviously, when it was installed, this wasn't a a chemical that was uh was regulated by D E P, but it's one of those that. Think they're calling it an emerging contaminant from Mass D E P, essentially. Something that we need to take a look at or monitor, and that's why we have to uh notify users. Um so immediately upon um the sampling results and notification, Mass D E P requires us to. Consistently sample, but also um ways to mitigate that, because the system, especially at Sherland Drive, is a dead end. I talked about, um it stops there, so it, you know, may have been, you know, a year or two of. P C E kind of just uh stopping at that dead end, so what we have to do is we have to install a bleeder or we flush it. What we did is we installed a bleeder of the tune of five gallons a minute, um to completely bleed out that um end of the line. And after sampling, it was not only below, it was well below, it was like point seven or point oh seven. Um which is well below, which I think is a point five. Um so the recommendation of Mass D E P and also the water department will still bleed it, but will decrease that bleeder down to about four gallons a minute. Um candidly, we should be bleeding all of our dead ends, just to make sure that, you know, not only just. Uh mitigating these substances, but also just making sure that those lines are constantly flowing. Uh so we will still test, I believe, uh we have to test for um two more periods, testing periods. And those results are um sent to uh Mass D E P and our and other state agencies and all publicly available. And we do send notices to the impacted users. Um in my conversations with D E P and the water department, but especially D E P, um the advisories are um. Less so on the drinking water side, but they've noticed a lot of the exposure has happened uh actually through breathing it, so you think about, especially in some of the industries that I mentioned. Uh you know, they're either spraying it, or there's other exposures that um that D E P and EPA were concerned about, so. Uh they strongly um asserted that that the water is safe, there should be no concern, especially now that the levels are at a. At a point where they're comfortable and no longer needed to be regulated or or reviewed, so. Um I just wanted to to both the brown water and and P C E present this to the board, is any questions or anything else you wanted to add to this? Uh before we um share this with the public online, and some of the folks that have been asking questions to our office.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it, and I think it's beneficial, and hopefully we can direct people to to that and keep it as an online resource. And I think providing the opportunities for people to test, have their water tested, and if they're so inclined, share the test results with their address. Would be helpful, so that that way Weston, Water Department and Weston and Sampson can continue to see at the end user, we're we're seeing. We're we're seeing what's coming out of of the of the pond and of the treatment plant and what is it checkpoints, but not. Individual houses, so. Thank you.
Just a quick shout out to the water department, their annual report uh consumer confidence report that they are required to submit by July one. Every year and is published on our town website, um all the reports, and actually they're all still there, I noticed. Um I don't know if you did that, that's good. Um so you can go onto the water department or the D P W site and find all the reports dating back to a long time ago. Um and this not only contains information that I I just mentioned, but also everything that we identify in the water system and um. Additional information on each of those chemicals or substances and what we're doing to treat them. It's a very comprehensive report uh that is available on our town website, and also if you wanna stop by, we can print that out for you as well.
Thank you, and thank them for all the work, because I know it's not an easy treatment plant and this time of year especially, they get hounded with stuff, so thank you. Um moving in to new business, we have a board of public works request for a water abatement. Um we were provided a letter with a little bit of background, um and um. The board is responsible for listening to or or viewing, not listening, but viewing um abatement requests for water in sewage. This is a water abatement request um for a significant increase in usage. Um because an outside faucet was left, was leaking. Um and so there the um rate payer is asking. To consider the average usage and not the the bill, the last three months average usage and not the build usage. Um I think historically, the board, it's at the the whim of the board. Um I think in recent years, the board has been um a little bit more scrutiny of of the abatements. Um and often willing to consider abating the sewage charge on the water usage, but not the water water charge. Um it seems like this was reviewed by D P W, um and um. The recommendation is to not abate, but D P W is not the the current authorizer of abatements, so that's the board.
So it says here they, so upon inspection, they've, she left the faucet on, is that what it is, the out outside?
So.
That the outlets toilets are not running, elderly woman lives alone. Um.
So it sounds like D P W went out and looked and found that there was an outside.
Faucet on.
Faucet or hose left leaking, the documentation that we had said that it was a faucet that. Was never used or touched, but um it sounds like it was somehow leaking.
Is there any detail on the condition of it, like is it old and rusting, so it just?
I mean, it says here no leaks. It was left on, right?
I mean, I think that this is one of the things we we as a board need to decide, um I.
Yeah, it's a tough call.
We gen- generally don't, I I mean, this, I think this is the first abatement that this board has seen.
Mm-hmm.
Um I know previous boards kind of were, if it's a leak. It was on the 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 rate payer to to correct and know that going forward, it was not going, you know, that it shouldn't happen again. Um and like I said, there sometimes would be willingness to abate the the sewage, the sewer treatment or the sewer piece of. That difference, um.
Yeah, I mean, it's a mistake that can happen to any one of us, you know, but.
With the thought, and the re- sorry, the reason for that is the thought that if it was an outside hole, outside faucet or something that was left on or or leaking. That that water was going into the ground and not into the the sewer system, so that if they were billed for the sewage. The sewer usage of that or treatment of that.
Um I guess if you're talking, she's looking to have her whole bill abated, is that what I'm looking at?
That's an average.
Yeah, no, I'm going over the bill here and I'm saying, okay, sewer is a charge. Sewer construction is a charge, which had nothing to do with her leaking. Sewer I and I had nothing to do with her leaking, so the only thing really was the water. So if you're going to abate, if that's the case, I would say, okay, I can see abating a small amount, but not the whole four hundred and forty one dollars. Cause a lot of that stuff has nothing to do with that particular leak. Or you can look at it and say, what's the average, we got thirteen, sixteen, fifteen, how many periods you wanna go back? And what's the average there and that becomes complicated, so.
I think, and I don't know the, we don't have any identifying information, um and I don't know the history, but if we even just look at the bill from a year ago. Um the usage is up slightly, but not um. So not not the drastic increase of what it had been the past couple. So it's possible that 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 there had been transitions in-house that had led to a decrease, a significant decrease in usage. Um in the past, within the past year, but it's hard to say, was it a summer billing versus a winter billing? Or, Tamika, did you have?
Yeah, so I was just gonna add that I had spoken with um the D P W director um to try to provide you with some information as to. How much to possibly abate, and he said he, there really is no way to come up with a number to do that. And he did provide the history of the past bills for the property to see that, you know, there are. When there has been high usage at that particular property. Um and so he said there really is no way for him to provide a number of of how much to abate if he were to abate it.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, our department, you know, he's the expert, if he's telling us don't do it, I I think we have to support his decision. That's that's my, I mean, he's the expert, I don't know anything but the stuff.
Harry's point, I mean, the the water portion of the bill is.
Visceral, yeah.
Compared to the sewer, so you, you're not gonna abate the entire bill, it's the water portion that we're looking for.
Right, and when you look at it, the the sewer bill is twice what, almost twice what the water bill is.
It's crazy.
So that normally doesn't make any sense to me. Do we charge twice what we charge for water for sewer?
Usually that's how it's paid, calculates out, yeah, but he said there's no way to determine how much of that water usage came from. The hose versus how much was actual water usage, and he said at the end of the day, the water was still. Used and it was, it was at the homeowners.
Okay.
Fault, although she didn't know, um so his, that's why his recommendation was to to not abate in this case.
Yes. Yeah, it is, it is difficult, I mean, to try to.
I know, and I, it's, we kind of, we've talked about this with other cases too, you know, you you set a precedent for. You know, we do something here and we say, well, it's this person, they didn't mean to, and then the next one comes in, oh, I left my hose running and didn't mean to.
Anyone with kids could come in here and say, my kids left the.
Left the hose running and, you know, I I just, I understand.
Yeah, it's expensive, it's, you feel for.
So.
Again, we're not talking a lot of money here.
No.
So it's not like, you know, if we do it as a precedent, yes, we don't know what we're gonna get in the future.
Right. So I think, and having the recommendation, I mean, D D P W did spend time going out and.
Yeah.
And looking and working with the homeowner and then we have D P W, you know, recommendation is to to not abate any portion. Um so.
Okay.
Is this something we need a motion on, or?
Yeah, in the past, the board has.
I was gonna say, I think we've historically done it, just, yeah.
So so what, a motion to deny?
A motion to deny the water abatement request.
The water abatement, okay. Tom, you wanna do?
Yeah, sure, I make a motion to deny the water abatement request, I'm sorry, the address was at.
I don't think we have the address.
No, we don't personally have the address to try to keep it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, so just that, um make a motion to.
Um you could say as presented. The water abatement request is.
Deny the water abatement request as presented.
As presented, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
There, a second.
Second.
Any other conversation, questions, hearing none, Harry will call.
Second eye.
Second eye.
My dry.
Yeah, my.
Wave an eye with apologies, but it's, these are always tough, cause you feel so hard.
Yeah, you feel for, it can happen to any one of us.
Um next we have, and Tamika, you'll follow up with the um.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you. Um to putting our select board hats back on, um moving into the fall, special fall town meeting, possible dates discussion. Um I know historically, we've looked kind of the Thursday, I think the past few years, it's been the Thursday before Thanksgiving. Um it seems like free cash has been certified kind of later and later every year. Um I know, I think there were some times that we kind of would try to do it the beginning of, closer into the beginning of November. Um I know we had conversations as to if we were going to act on the the chapter land, trying to to include that or not. That conversation would come up next week, but um Austin, I don't know if you had, you or Tamika had um ideas.
Yeah, so that would put you um, I think the date would be November sixteenth, is the Thursday before. Um so so the intention is, you know, board kind of decides the date and then we'll put together the calendar of events with some of the the. Dates and deadlines, um and also corresponding with select board finance committee meetings as well. Um I think the practice of making a a special town meeting, a a spending meeting, um is something that respectfully, I would. Recommend to to get away from, um especially I think with free cash certified so close to. I think in previous year certified so close to special town meeting, I think it would be prudent for the board to consider and and town to consider. Maybe shying away from making a spending meeting and utilizing those uh that reserve or those resources for our capital. Or for the next year's operating budget, uh if you also think about this timeline. The capital plan will not even be presented to the select board and finance committee for their review. However, there are some action items uh that we'll need to address, um and the the thought would be at the special town meeting. We've got some zoning changes that have been um presented to the town. Uh we do uh need to clean up um some language that was missed in the annual town meeting for water and sewer enterprise account. Um just with respect to the reserve fund, um so no impact on rates, more so just taking from the retained earnings. Just to make sure that the water and sewer departments have resources they need. We do have a street acceptance uh request that needs to be addressed by town meeting. And some other cleanup articles um for the assessors office and some other town departments that have requested for articles to be considered. So uh we do have some business that needs to be taken care of, um so if the board has a desired date. Uh and we can work with staff and the relevant committees to make sure that fits within our schedule.
Tamika, did you?
I was just gonna add that I reached out to Randy Jordan, our moderator, and he confirmed that he is available that Thursday, November sixteenth.
Okay. Um and I know we talked about this and it's not, but if we were to, with the chapter land discussion. Next, potentially next week, does that fall within our hundred and twenty days?
Yes, November twenty eighth is a hundred and twenty days.
And what do we need to do within that, do we need to actually?
You have to either waive or exercise your right of first refusal.
Right, but exercising it, I think, might require more than just saying we want it, I'm not one of your, like, what does exercising it mean?
Do you deposit, deserve everywhere, right?
Right, right, I mean, do we need to?
First sale, right?
We have to come up with funds if, at the time.
Right, and so then, right, and so that's the the question is, that town meeting then potentially would. Then we would need an election also if it's spending, no, only for borrowing, right?
And only if you need an election if you're gonna do like a debt exclusion or something like that to borrow, you can you can authorize the borrowing, like a temporary borrowing. Um without a, if you do.
And this is all just hypothetical, because we have, I just wanted to make sure that we're, if if the opportunity is to move forward with it, that we.
Right, correct.
Know what we need to do and that we're providing ourselves the time to do that without trying to add an expense of an additional special in. Um I think, I mean, I think that first half of November is ideal. Basically, it gets through kind of the craziness of the fall and everything and then leads into the before the craziness of the holidays. Um and hopefully before any big storms or anything, but.
So sixteenth?
That's, I mean, that's historically where it would have been, um I think historically, it's been somewhat flexible. I think historically, it's been the past few years, I don't remember how many, um.
But is the point being, if we try and stay away from spending articles where we don't need to worry about certified free cash, we could bump it up.
We could potentially be earlier. Right. And I know, like, the first couple weeks, so there's Halloween, which is usually big in town for families. Um and then the first couple weeks of November, we run into um. Veterans Day, and I think the school has a couple days, I don't know, for this year.
Election Day too, right?
Yeah.
Election Day is seventh?
Probably the seventh, it's usually the first Tuesday, yeah, yeah. So um and I think veterans days generally November eleventh, might be observed the the tenth. So if we try to do the ninth, people may be heading out.
Mm-hmm.
For a long weekend or something.
Yeah.
Um it doesn't have to be a Thursday either, um. I think generally it has been a Thursday, because those are generally less busy meeting days.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that provides us, if it's an on week for our regular scheduled meeting, to to conduct regular scheduled business as well. Rather than trying to squeeze a a meeting in before.
Well, October twenty sixth.
It's my birthday.
Too soon, oh yeah? Like, go to bed.
I don't want to get to a certain age to stop celebrating birthdays.
The twenty sixth might almost be too.
Too early?
Uh because of posting, right, we need.
Yeah, you properly post.
Is it forty five days for specials?
We need public hearings for the street acceptance, um yeah, and I I.
Hmm.
I think too, if if we hold the meeting. And early enough where we may or may not have free cash certification, we would just have to make it explicitly clear. That this meeting would not be for spending free cash, cause I just think historically, that's kind of what it's been if we if we do it earlier than when we think we'll get free cash certified.
I mean, I don't necessarily disagree that moving away from the expectation that that's where it's gonna be, everybody's like.
Can we go further, can we do like December seventh? Into December?
It's hard the further you get into December, just cause then sometimes you're dealing with weather and then, you know, sometimes you hit the snow.
It's the snow till February.
Ah, which, wonderful, and it's hard too, I feel like once you hit the holidays from like between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah.
And there's um a school event that time of year as well, and we have to be able to reserve Glenwood. And they usually tend to do, you know, concerts and it's just kinda gets to be a crazier time.
Do you know, is Glenwood, sorry, what?
No, I'm just talking myself, sorry.
I haven't reached, I haven't reached out to Karen yet, um cause I wasn't sure which direction the board was gonna go, yeah.
Can we do some, make some phone calls and make the decision next meeting, or does that, this is gonna be done tonight, is it too late?
I'm looking at the timing, it's forty five days for posting, like.
It's two weeks, it's, it's fourteen days to post the warrant. Um but we have to have, the select board has to have a public hearing for the street acceptance, the planning board has to have one, they have to make their recommendation, they then have to come back to the board. So I have to make sure that I have enough time to to get all of that in there.
Have four, what's forty five days, is that when the war- warrant has something, I think it's forty five days. Is it for annual, I have had in my head forty five days for something, I don't know what.
I don't think it's town meeting that has a forty five day thing, it might be an election, but I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a um, is there a timeframe that we need the street acceptance for?
What do you mean?
For it to be completed by?
I think he just wants it off his books before going into the winter.
Um so this was actually, this was actually supposed to come to annual town meeting and there was.
Yeah, let's not, let's not do anything on their schedule, let's worry about us.
Yeah.
No, it was supposed to go, no.
Well, no, it was supposed to, and there was some things that happened behind the scenes on the town side that prevented that from happening. So we pushed him off another six months. Yeah, so um you know, it, the right thing to do would be to to make sure that that this goes through. And in some of the legwork has already happened, it's already had um reviewed by the third party engineer, Quinn Engineering, so, right.
No, I only ask because you may potentially have, and I don't wanna add to Peter's show, but you may potentially also have one in February. Something for the board to consider too, if you wanted to, especially if it's not a. Something for the board to consider too, if you wanted to, especially if it's not a massive spending and it's a couple of cleanup things. Maybe we start with those cleanup and then hand it to Peter, um, for his. Bylaw presentation, so.
I'm, I mean, I'm kind of more of the inclination of keeping something on the books in the fall because whether it's. Spending or not, I feel like there's often cleanup that needs to happen from annual or or. Whatever, sometimes there is spending that has come in that we know an emergency or something's happened and we need to to address or something. Um, so, and ideally I would hope that we would more pro- be more proactive with our capital plans and have a better sense going forward. That maybe we can address, but. I don't know how the board, like I said, I'm more inclined to keep one in the fall, um. And then looking at the dates would be the other thing. Um, we know Randy is available on the on November sixteenth, but we don't know, I would say no to the week of November sixth. Because that would be an election week, so the Tuesday would be out, and then I think it's Veterans Day, so we may lose people.
Yeah.
The week before that, the week of October thirtieth. Um, I mean, I don't know how the board feels about like. If we're looking at Thursdays like November second or something, um.
Man, I don't have concerns with the second or the sixteenth, it's just a matter of can we get done what we need to.
Right, right, I'd have to check with Randy on the the second, cause the only date he gave me feedback on was the sixteenth.
Yeah, and I think even, I mean, yeah.
And he did say he would um prefer it to not be on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Do we wanna just do the sixteenth? Is there any reason not to?
Right, is there anything keeping us from doing the sixteenth?
I think we can keep it on the sixteenth then, as as long as the school's available. Is that?
So, um, how about we plan for the sixteenth, I will confirm with Dr. Kapucci that the school is available.
Yeah.
Um, and then at the next meeting, we'll have the board officially vote to set the daytime and location.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Yeah, I think, is that okay with you, Austin?
Okay, and I think if needed, then if that's a no, then you know, look at the second with Randy and and the school.
Yeah. School.
Um, I hate to go, you know, I think the other would be then October twenty sixth, but then that pushes. The time that feels really soon.
It's the deadline, yeah.
Yeah.
And as a backup, um, if you remember from last year's special town meeting, we were able to use NaQuag. So if Glenwood isn't available on either of those dates, we can also defer to NaQuag as well. I know it's not the first choice, but we did successfully do it last year.
We've done it a few few times in the recent.
Yes.
Which has the better P A system?
Glenwood.
That's why Glenwood's preferred.
Yeah, Glenwood is always the priority, but sometimes they are not available on the dates that work for us.
Like, I mean, the last time we had some problems, that's why I asked, is NaQuag was better.
Okay, does that, you have that, Tamika?
Yes, I got it.
Alright.
And I assume like we'll go for six P M like we usually do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Sixteen?
Yeah, the November sixteen is when she's gonna confirm with um. Yep, yeah.
Can we make it earlier? Is, I mean.
The town has done them earlier, town has done October town meetings.
That might actually encourage more people to show.
Wait, do you mean date or time of day?
Time or some date?
Ti- a time of day.
Oh.
We can't because of the after school programs that are run by our lovely wife.
Oh, sure, that's, I will speak to her.
Please stop, yeah.
Forget I mentioned, yeah.
Stop all your head.
You knew that already.
I think, I think earlier is tough, a lot of, a lot of people commute and so to.
Working parents, yeah.
To get that, but.
Yeah, no, it's hard, yeah.
We've done earlier on a Saturday.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, it's tough on a weeknight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we wanna get people to attend.
And no matter what, cause then we run into dinner and bedtimes and stuff, so it's, yeah. Okay, moving on, thank you, Tamika. Thank you, Austin. Um, is there any other business before we head into general bylaw? And I don't know how far we'll get because it's already eight twenty. For a short meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
Do we need to close?
No, we're gonna.
Yeah, we, we're still doing this, yeah, so.
Um, yeah, if I may, just very quickly, I just wanted to give the board a heads up that we'll have two public hearings at the September eighteenth meeting. One will be the continued one for the chapter property and we'll have some updated information for you. The other is going to be something that I don't think has come before the board in many years, but um, it's a license for uh flammable's essentially. Um, for and the, it's a, it's a license for flammable's. Um, so essentially, propane, yeah.
Compass, right? Yeah.
Um, so the board has to license the vessel that is going to be stored in, so that's gonna be coming before you folks. Um, for the marijuana facility, the cultivation marijuana, um, excuse me, cultivation manufacturing facility. So, um, just a heads up that we'll have that one next time.
And that's the one in the old Simcabs.
Correct.
Sim's Cab or whatever, yeah.
Yes, yep, and Seth is involved as well.
I was gonna say, and that will have been through all the permitting that it needs to.
Correct, we're going through that whole process right now, um, and Seth is either going to provide an informational memo to the board or he's going to attend the meeting.
Yes.
Um, cause he's ultimately the one that's gonna give the final sign off on it, um. So I just wanna give a heads up on that, exactly, yep, so he clarified that you guys licensed the vessel and then he essentially permits the u- the use of it, so.
Okay.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah.
That's a new one.
That's a new one, that's just why I wanted to give you a heads up, cause I think it's been years since that's come before the board and I read up on M G L, cause that was a new one for me too and so, um. But we'll get it done.
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, and while we're just waiting, I think, I can't remember if we had talked about potentially tentatively scheduling. Uh, uh, bylaw review meeting on Wednesday next week or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the thirteenth.
The thirteenth, but I think Paul, you said you have a conflict?
Uh, I have, thirteenth is okay, the twentieth is not.
Oh, okay, because I was gonna say if there's, cause I think.
Yeah, it was next week.
Okay, the, and the thirteenth is good for you guys, I know Tom is always tricky, and so that's why if there was another. Person that was gonna be out, I would say definitely no.
And I will have to watch the recording, cause I'm unable to attend.
Yeah. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
I know you said it wasn't ideal, that's why I was.
Yeah, now I'm into soccer season, I have two kids playing soccer, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays.
Clone yourself, I really don't. Um.
Sorry, I missed that, what were the dates?
No, we didn't decide yet.
Oh.
Yeah, we haven't. We tentatively had scheduled another bylaw review on the thirteenth.
Yeah, I'm good for that, yeah, yeah.
Next week, oh, okay, you, so you are good for the.
I'm good for the thirteenth, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we can.
If if Tom's good, we can schedule it, I might, if I can go, I might have to be late.
Okay.
But. I I don't know if I can commit just yet.
Yeah, or if it helps you to hop on Zoom too, like that's always.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I, like I said, I.
But at least the town's here.
I appreciate the time everybody's putting into these because I would like to just get them to town, before town.
Yeah.
To to vote, so, thank you. Okay, I think we were on the finance committee.
Well, not yet, um, so I know you were just talking about. February, sorry, about Fall Town Meeting, but we need to start making scheduling. Settings for whenever we're going to do this one, assuming the bylaw one, assuming that that's in February. We have roughly four months of work to do between now and then, because half of November's gonna be dead and half of December's gonna be dead. That's four months of work to get all of them reviewed by you folks through legal review. Public information sessions and all that, so I only would like one decision tonight, and it's a fairly, I think, simple one. It, assuming that it is a February town meeting, um, you want it a Thursday night or a Saturday night? Now, the benefit to Saturday is we could do it afternoons, as with school availability, so we could make it earlier. It would have to be evening on a Thursday, there's no question. The history of the town is only annual has been on a Saturday in recent history. It's up to you.
I feel like gym space on a Saturday in February may be extremely tough with all the basketball and sports, um. My, my gut kind of was a Thursday, just gut instinct, but I don't know, I think there's. Potential value to having it on a Saturday, but like I said, my gut is.
I don't think those run like in the later afternoon though, I think most of them are in the.
It's setting up, um, after.
Okay.
I don't, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I know some of the older kids have tournaments and I I really don't know.
Yeah, they're all in.
Yeah.
Maybe we can reach out to. To Karen and see if. Both Glen, maybe both Glenwood and NaQuag, knowing that Glenwood is by far preferred, um, but that. To see if there would be any Saturday options around. Um, school vacation week, like.
I was gonna say before.
I was gonna say excluding.
It would be before school vacation week, I imagine, so it would not be the Saturday that begins school vacation week, cause that's. Suicide in terms of getting anybody there, so it, I don't remember the exact dates, but it, I believe there are two. No, I think there's only one Saturday in February before, I'd have to check to be sure about that.
So the Sat, I don't know when school vacation week is.
It's always like.
It's the third week.
Yeah, it's always the week with the holiday.
Twelfth, right?
Nineteenth.
Oh, it's a nineteenth.
Right, but I, it's a twelfth or the nineteenth for the holiday, and I could argue that it's either one, but you said President's Day is the nineteenth, so we could do.
President's Day on the nineteenth.
The third or the tenth then.
Uh, just a note, I will be in the Caribbean for two weeks in February.
Well, that's selfish. Does that overlap school vacation week perhaps?
Yeah, I know. Wait, when are you going, Harry? Ah, gotta gotta check with my wife, I think it's the second week we're leaving. Hold on.
It's the week before, the week of the twelfth?
Yeah.
So that's the week before school vacation. So you're gone the twelfth and the nineteenth week?
Yes.
So. The third, potentially the tenth, or then maybe looking at March second.
I was gonna say March second.
I mean, I think March, March would give us just an, almost another, like essentially another month, right, I feel like if we go February third, that that's, we're losing an entire month.
It'll, it'll add basically two weeks of work, because everything has to be locked down early enough.
Right.
So it lets us push a couple weeks further than if we had it in February.
Right. So should we tentatively look at?
March looks good.
March second.
Look at March second, tentatively. I don't have all kids' schedules yet, so I don't know. That far out, but.
At the very least, I can check availability.
Yeah, and maybe just availability kind of in general on Saturdays, um. And and inquire just availability even on Thurs, just so we know whether Thursdays or Saturdays would be easier if we need to go either route.
I I would hesitate going any further out than that though, because you're gonna start overlapping town meetings and that's.
Yeah. Town meeting probably.
We already have enough troubles with all the work that needs to be done.
Plus you're entering into baseball season and people are busy and yeah, it becomes, March is actually probably one of the safer months.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Might be.
Cause basketball's over and baseball's not really.
Not quite there yet, they're doing, they're doing organizational work.
Not quite, even the gauges, but they're not, yeah, so they're not full speed yet, so.
So I would, yeah, we could look, February, maybe the first week or two in March, but to your point, I don't really wanna go.
Okay.
Beyond that, because we really need to start focusing on annual.
Exactly.
I mean, I know Austin had with the the finance plan to kind of have a good sense of where things stand. Going into to February, March, but, um, there's always the. The warrants.
Yeah, by that time C I P C's report will be ready and everything.
So is that helpful if we are looking generally towards Saturday?
Yes. That's fine, I'm fine with that. I was just looking for guidance so we can, and hopefully next time we'll have enough information to pick a target date.
And I think, I mean, it sounds like kind of the the second half of Febu- Feb- closer to March, the beginning of March than the beginning of February. Just based on, it gives us another couple weeks.
Sure.
Support schedules and stuff, but, okay, thank you.
Okay, now, that's part one, part two, our special legislation uh is in a committee for the third reading for the House.
That's a good sign.
And. I haven't seen a hearing or any procedural dates noted. Um, but when something else happens, I'll let you know, but once it comes out of that committee, it's a vote by the House. And assuming there are no changes, it's already been approved by the Senate, so it goes, I believe it goes straight to the governor's desk.
We'll get Brett Ferguson, I met with her, her district director today, she is going to uh. Check with both Senate and House clerks, just on the status for uh in terms of scheduling. Um, and the committee on third reading to see, uh, but she's. Confident that it will be probably another month or so before it gets to the governor's desk and no issues with it being signed.
Thank you.
Great, so now let's back up to Board of Public Works because I had, I have more information than I had before. Uh, Austin was copied on uh on the conversation I had with council and basically the upshot. Is that there are, my interpretation of even though the town council says is there are still two distinct boards. With distinct sets of responsibility. Now, how we procedurally manage that with a single body that does both? Um, all, town council says always post for both. To the question that Tamika asked last time, yes, minutes should be annotated to say this is an action of the Board of Public Works. Um, and maybe I'm annotating every vote, fine. What isn't clear, and I haven't started to probe a little more deeply into this, is. When an action needs to be taken by one and then the other board, it's not that you don't, I mean, if there are official actions, they still need to be official votes, but. It's unclear to me how much of some of that trade off between the two boards needs to be really separate, um. For example, making. What do we, what did we talk about last time? There was something about warrant articles maybe. That something needs to be passed by the Board of Public Works to get a warrant article, so first it has to be approved by the Board of Public Works as a vote. And then an action needs to be taken by the select board to approve. It's, it doesn't seem to me that if we're going to be in strict compliance, that those could be considered a single action by a single body. It's, it feels to me as though we need to treat the bodies as entirely separate things.
Does that mean Tamika now also does the work for us on the. Board of Public Works so that she can do a warrant and send it to the select board?
That's right. And if you can separate those hours, Tamika.
That just sounds to me like if we need to separate, um, we'd have to make two of the same motion, one is, right?
Well, they're not, they're not formally the same action, I mean, in the example I just gave, the for, the the vote to. To request the select board to add a warrant article is one vote, and a vote by the select board to actually place it on the warrant is a separate vote. They are separate actions.
Okay, so that's something where they might, we might need to do it as an action as the Board of Public Works on one meeting and then the following meeting. It needs to go on an agenda?
It could actually be in the same meeting, there's no reason that it couldn't be.
Okay.
As long as all the dis- all the, the, the points of discussion are in the agenda. Or added to the agenda by vote of the body.
Okay, so there, that might be what we might need to do in some cases is vote to add an agenda item if it's something that wasn't previously there.
And we'll just continue, continue, I think Tamika, tonight we definitely were posted as both, but just kind of always post as both, always and.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I was just gonna say if it's a specific certain example like you were saying where you were talking about a warrant article. Maybe that night we post them separately and you open as the Board of Public Works, you talk about the warrant article, you make your motion, you close, and then you open as the select board and vote to place the warrant article.
Yeah, I feel like it gets best messy trying to open and close multiple meetings and.
Yeah.
It, it does, the posting.
Well, don't only think in that specific instance, like the rest of the time I would think, Joy, but maybe in that one so that you had the clarification between the two boards acting?
It, it, it is always going to be a little fuzzy because of the organization of the town. I don't think there, I don't think we're going to add a a a a significant amount of clarity. To me, pu- having two separate meetings means almost certainly having a delay between one and the other. Between when you close and when you're posted to open the next meeting. Between one and the other, between when you close and when you're posted to open the next meeting. My gut tells me that's probably more hassle than it's worth rather than just. Putting both elements on the same agenda for a joint meeting and again, you. You, everybody has to understand which board is responsible for which vote, putting it in the minutes, putting, well, in the minutes especially. But putting it in the agenda doesn't hurt. Maybe, maybe we start. Prefixing B B O S versus B P W on agenda items when a vote would be necessary, maybe.
I did do that tonight. That that was my intention was to just.
Yeah, and I think I did clarify tonight also that it was a Board of Public Works conversation and then that we were going back to select board.
Yep.
Hmm.
Um, I think some of it, I think that example is. Clear. I mean, it's one of the more clear ones. I think sometimes we get. The conversation and this was some of pulling out the responsibilities of the the Board of Public Works versus the Select Board. Um conversations about streets and everything, um how.
And trees and things like that.
Yeah, the kind of, yeah.
Like for the next, or whenever we have the hearing on this, or this, for the street acceptance, is that supposed to technically be under?
Select Board.
That's select.
That's Select Board.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay.
Because that's effectively contractual.
I see, okay.
Well, I was thinking when I said trees of when Dick Williams mentioned there was a tree with power lines running through it. Well, that really falls under the Board of Public Works. So in that case, do you tell the citizen, uh this is not the right venue to bring that up? Are you turn and go to Public Works? Or you say, well, you know what? We'll discuss it with the Board of Public Works. I don't know. That's the crazy stuff that I don't see.
A lot of this, the town is going to have to just figure out and grow up on on its own. I mean, historically. We've said this before. Although the Select Board has taken on duties of the Board of Public Works, historically, we know that's not the right thing. And we accept that it wasn't right and we do better moving forward by. Paying attention, by paying closer attention to the details of what's being asked to do. I I I I don't suggest for a moment that it's always going to be clear. There are always going to be fuzzy motions, fuzzy fuzzy moments. Where nobody knows exactly what the right thing to do and and. Will collectively make the best guess that we can with the knowledge that we have at the moment.
Is that something, if it if it's something on the agenda that's specifically D P W related, should be mandatory that the the director is here to speak to it? Or is that something? For the sake of the public, for the sake of the public.
Well, that's a very separate question. Um there. If I think back to, for example, all the water abatements in the last eight years that I can think of. D P W director slash superintendent has been around for maybe, maybe twenty five or thirty percent of them. And general, and has not been universally there or universally not. Because, like in this one, you've got guidance from the director and. Maybe the director being there would be, would add more credence being here, excuse me, I I don't know. I I I leave that to you folks to decide. If you want him there and if so, that's effectively a policy decision. Have at it.
Yeah, again, the last thing I wanna do is create more work for people. Have them show up when they don't need to, but I'm just thinking for the sake of the public to see, you know, somebody in here to speak to these matters.
I think that would be like case by case. If there's something, you know, significant that we feel we should have somebody present.
Right, on the agenda, right.
Ask, yeah.
And I think, I mean, I know I personally have been trying to push some of the Department of Communications through the Town Administrator's Office. Um to not have staff.
Right, on a regular basis, right. But I'm talking something that's specific to D P W.
If you need the D P W director, there's no, there should not be a problem, having the D P W director or any department head present.
I mean, Becky was here tonight to to talk to us about the treasurer collector and Seth and Nick will come in, you know, the chiefs will come in and. Um everything, so I think that that's.
Yeah, yeah.
So the other side effect of all this, the things that we've learned, the discussions with town council is. In my opinion, we need a separate Board of Public Works by law. I, because you're still two bodies, I don't think combining the duties into the single select board serves the town.
This is for my own information and you might not know the answer. Does, do you know of any other towns or is legal aware of any other towns that have? A joint um select board slash Board of Public Works? Because I'm wondering, like. I wasn't here in the seventies when the vote to to adopt a Board of Public Works and to make it a. A joint um with the select board was taken, so I don't know what the the rationale was behind it. And my recent experience has been mostly on the water sewer commissioner side of things and that's kind of been it. And so I wonder if we're trying to retrofit stuff that is not, A, how we've historically done stuff and B. What the the town, you know, I don't think the town necessarily cares where whose hat we're wearing. It's still, the directives are still coming from the same body of people.
Well, it's the same five people, but. One instance of the five of you has certain responsibilities and duties and powers. And the other instance of the same five people have different duties and powers. How other towns do it, I haven't looked into and frankly. I'm not sure I want to go and find out that they're violating mass general law. I don't wanna find that out. Cuz if I find it out, I then have to take action. I'm I'm bound to take action.
Question, um if. Any authority is delegatable, could the board hypothetically create an appointed Board of Public Works? Acting through the authorities of mass general law that's delegated by its bylaw.
Well, you can't call it Board of Public Works.
Why?
Because the Board of Port of Public Works is an elected body by mass general law and by our special legislation. It's an elected body definitionally.
So I'll have to look into the town Dartmouth cuz they did it. So I'll have to look and see.
I don't know, I have no idea if they even have adopted. Chapter forty one, section sixty nine, or the appropriate portions of section sixty nine.
But if, so but if if the select board is elected as the chief executive. They, through the authority also of master law, but a lot of their other authorities, they have delegated some of their their authorities to. My position, other positions as well. So if that can be fixed through, if that is something that. And I'm not suggesting that the board is considering this, but just as hypothetical, is that something to separate them out? To actually make them truly separate bodies, but still responsible to the select board. Uh just something to consider, I don't know.
So, so I I think the greater answer is, I believe something like that could be set up. We can't call it the Board of Public Works, we'd have to call it something else. Who cares? Nomenclature is not that important in the grand scheme of things if you're even close to right. This, however, is all based on the notion of delegation, which I have not heard back from town council about. And that's obviously a very important question for a lot of the bylaws. And I don't, and once I get an answer, then we're gonna know a lot more about how we need to change the bylaws to make. Everything that we believe delegatable to delegatable. It's interesting that we took, I mean, I again, it's it's the basis. We we took town administrator from other places and there is a section that explicitly allows delegation of any power. Great, but do we need to say that everywhere? And if so, we can add. Select Board can delegate powers. The Board of Public Work can delegate all its powers. Or maybe we don't have to say anything. I have, this is what I need to get from town council. Cuz my, my hope is to make. The smallest set of changes to have the greatest effect. And as, I mean, as you suggested, Austin, I can't rule it out. It's a single general provisions that says any power of any. Town official can be delegated. Maybe that we can, maybe we can get away that easily. That'd be fantastic. When I know more, I'll let you all know.
Thank you.
So. When last we left our intrepid heroes, now I have to find my mouse. So I can, come on. By the way, I don't know if anybody noticed that I did in fact publish the bylaws. I think, yeah, that one, it keeps changing. I did publish the latest set of bylaws over the weekend, so this is what is online right now. One of, there were discussion points last time. About whether or not we need A and B here, which is originally responsible for oversight and control. Mild changes, mild changes to this one, shall be responsible for oversight and control. Excuse me, I just need to press the right button here. Oversight and control, oh, it should be of the mechanical operation of the town landfill sites which collect refuse. So if it's an active town dump, it is a public work and so it should be as far as mechanical operation. Those words are in the original. That's, that's all public works, yes, sent into the department, et cetera. Oh, yeah, the footnote is probably worthwhile reading as well. There we go. Oversight of landfill sites which have been closed and kept is a responsibility of the Board of Health. Which, which is something we all discussed last time and that is in fact what makes sense. So, the Board of Public Works is only responsible for a landfill which is collecting refuse.
I think D C R's got a hand in that, too.
There is some, but in terms of the town management, that's, yes, D C R. Uh, D C R, D E P, M I P A. Will all have a hand.
This is true.
There's a lot going on there.
Yes.
Uh now. We have no dump sites that collect refuse today. I would only suggest leaving in there in case. Something happens in the future and the town opens a new one, that responsibility is clear. But there is today no actual need for A. Yes.
Some communities are looking at regional partnerships. What if hypothetically, collection of refuse is now located. Within the town limits, but it's neighboring community. That'd be Board of Public Works or. Cuz that would be more of an interminable.
That's, yeah, see, there are lots of ways things get fuzzy. And even the pure reading of M G L about the collection of refuse being a Board of Public Works responsibility. Is not clear to me how it actually applies when. Town land, when the collection, the disposition of that is not a public work. This goes back to the, the Board of Health licenses. The different refuse collectors, but if one did it for the town. If there were a townwide for the residents contract, who's responsible for that? I can't tell you for sure because I'm sure the Board of Health has to be involved. But the contract can only be done by the select board. Because I don't see a board in the list of boards that that. Board of Public Works subsumed, uh that would cover a contract for collection of refuse. But the words in the public, you know, in sixty nine D suggest that that's the, that it would be the Public Works Board. If it ever came to that, town council will be heavily involved to guide us.
And does refuse also include, I don't know if recycling is considered. Refuse, but we do have the membership to our truth at Earth Day. Um which, I guess very similar to my previous question, is that a.
So, at at this point, I would suggest it is not a public work. Because the town doesn't take action other than hand them money for for, to to belong to the consortium. But there is no action by anybody in the town other than establishment of the agreement. And so I I don't think it's a public work. When I think of public work. Water and sewer, very clearly, lots of things that happen inside the town, the roadways. There's, there, there is activity that the town takes place to maintain, to explicitly maintain things. And I don't see that being true in a refuse center and my, again, this is my interpretation of things. I don't see that happening if, even if the town were to contract out. Refuge collection. My gut tells me that's not a public work. That is a contractual thing. And that's all it would be. And because the town isn't doing lots of things by itself other than establishing a contract, I don't think it's a public work. Your mileage may vary. Check with town council. Any other questions about anything A adjacent?
I I have a question on one of the duties. Forestry. Do we have one? Forest, it mentions in the bylaw something about forestry.
Right, cuz forestry, the department of, any department that managed forestry was, the responsibility for that came under the Board of Public Works.
So, cuz in the selectman's book from M M A, it defines forestry as somebody who. Oversees forest fires. So I'm trying to figure out, should that be the chief of poli- uh fire or should that be D P W?
Well, it depends on exactly what the words mean cuz it's still not that simple. Managing forestry. And managing forest fires is actually preventative in nature and not. The act of controlling an active forest fire. That controlling fire is a fire department responsibility in all of its instances.
Hand Smokey the bear.
Hand Smokey the bear, very true. But forestry, part of forestry's job is to prevent forest fires with proper forest management. Whether it's selective culling of, cutting of trees, um.
Not here, but. Yeah.
Yeah, controlled burns, um, uh, what, what was the joke?
Okay.
Sweeping up all the pine needles so they don't catch it. I mean, that's the, all of those, those kinds of forest. Management activities is what a forester does.
And that's what we've assigned to D P W.
That's what Board of Public Works absorbed. I don't think, I don't.
Everybody's done anything with forestry.
And I don't know that we had a forestry department before Board of Public Works was created.
The reason I mention is cuz according to that, it says this, uh, the Board of Public Works is responsible for appointing the forestry. So, and I didn't see anything other than that little quip, not even in here really, it just mentions forestry. So I was.
Right.
I didn't know, I just asked.
So the.
I think some of that's my confusion also is when the town adopted the Board of Public Works, M G L. Sixty nine, C through F or whatever, a lot of the, uh, my understanding is a lot of those existing. Individuals, boards, commissions, whatever, didn't exist in town anyway, so we absorbed things that didn't exist. Um, and so.
So you got the responsibility with none of the manpower to support it. Sounds right.
Well, not even, not even the person power, but just any sort of what. It entails. I think, I don't know for sure.
I was just concerned of forest fire is responsible for overseeing forest fires. It sounds like it should be the fire chief, but it didn't define that when I was reading, that's why.
I, historically, it has been. Having all the um land in here that does not belong to the town officially, but it's within the town borders, but belongs to. Um Department of Conservation, Registration, uh Recreation rather, or whatever. Um, there have been a combination of things that happened. Okay, there is a department, uh, well, division eight O. Okay, there is a department, uh, well, Division eight O is the, is the division that handles this area of the town, of the state rather, okay? And there's different divisions. It starts out with one O down the Cape and works its way westward, all right? So we're in Division eight O. So Division eight O's headquarters is up in, I think it's Princeton, on one forty. And so when you drive by there, um, you'll generally see, you know, there's activity going on there, and so on and so forth. And there's a district fire warden who has a certain amount of responsibility to these properties that we have, but he will come in when told, you know, by the local fire chief that, yeah, you gotta, you gotta get over here and, and offer some support. And they do have firefighting equipment, and they've been in this town. Oh, we spent a couple of days over the prison camp one year, I remember that one.
So according to you, you, you said the fire chief has that forestry fire?
Okay.
Peter ran out on us.
Does that mean we should adjourn?
Peter, if you can, yes.
I'm gonna say, I'm speeding fast, it's almost nine o'clock, yeah.
I have to go make sure that our recording won't stop in four minutes.
We tried to run out on you, but.
I, I, full transparency, I don't know that I'm gonna make it mu- much past nine o'clock. We've been here for three hours already, and I.
Yeah, exactly, just, if we can just make a couple of quick decisions about this, we can put it to bed and move on. Moving on to B, responsible for the maintenance and repair of town buildings and property except those properties where an alternate authority is defined by statute, regulation, bylaw, or contract. So this is almost exact, if not exactly, then almost exactly it was in here last time you saw it. There was discussion last time of maybe removing A and B simply because they're already in mass general law. And my committee doesn't like replicating things in mass general law, but those two elements were already in the bylaw. Variance of what's there now. So, my question to you is do you want A and B to remain because they are effectively duplicative of mass general law?
I thought A was not duplicative of mass general law, cause I didn't think A's.
Oh, that's right, A may not be, it's not, it was, this is one of those fuzzy ones, so A is, should probably stay, so it's really B. B is, I think, reasonably clearly state laid out in mass general law. But I leave it to you, if you wanna leave it, and the reason you'd leave it is not just necessarily for this iteration of the Select Board, but, or Board of Public Works, but for the future as well.
I think, I think having B in, even if it's a duplicate, it's, it's still something that's more at the forefront of what we deal with as a board, making sure that the town properties are taken care of. So I don't have a problem leaving it as just, it's easier to reference here than try and slice through M G L.
Yeah, go through twelve pages of Public Works.
I guess my only comment is a lot of time, and I think I made this comment before, is in some bylaws, we're very explicit calling out sub, certain sections of M G L, but not others, and others we just reference M G L or, or don't, and I would wish to see kind of continuity across all bylaws that if we're gonna call out, because maybe to, to me, it hasn't been Board of Public Works that has been doing that, but it's been Select Board that's been aware of what needs to be done. There's never been any money or recommendations to, to actually do the repair and maintenance, or, or very limited. And oftentimes, it's been D P W that has kind of spearheaded that. So it's been happening, but it hasn't been happening by the hat of the Board of Public Works explicitly, and so I guess, I, I, I don't know.
In looking, in looking through our bylaws and then researching the general laws that coincide with that, I found the Board of Public Works to be very involved, and this clarifies for future boards pretty much what the crux of the responsibility is, because otherwise you have to go through sixty-nine A, through a sixty-nine D, and all this other stuff. Define very simple language here. If you wanna dig into mass general law forty, sixty-nine D, fine. But I think that pretty much clarifies it in a statement of what future boards can take a look at and say, yeah, okay, I got an idea now, without researching mass general laws.
Yeah, specific to the needs of this town, specific to the needs of this town, this is, this is more, as a Board of Public Works, these are the areas that were typically, we see come before the, what should be the Board of Public Works. Not necessarily a lot of the forestry issues, like you said, or, you know, some of those other things.
I mean, it doesn't reference on there the.